Good evening, I'd like to call it a order this regularly scheduled meeting for the City Council of the City of Calistoga. It is Tuesday, November 20th, 2018 at 6:01 PM. City Clerk Flamson, has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Thank you very much. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lopez-Ortega?
Here.
Councilmember Barnes?
Here.
Councilmember Kraus?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dunsford?
Here.
Mayor Canning?
Here. If you'll all please stand and join me for the salute to the flag. Upon conclusion of the Pledge of Allegiance, we will remain standing for a moment of silence for those victims of the two wildfires in Northern California and Southern California.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Obviously, the situation is tragic in both parts of the state of California, more so in Butte County, and brings back the harsh reality of what this community faced just a year ago. If not for a lot of hard work and Mother Nature, no change in winds, this community very seriously could have ended up in the same situation where Paradise is. So, please, do what you can, when you can, and think of those folks. I just couldn't imagine losing 80 percent of your community in a matter of a day. So, please keep that in mind and obviously stay vigilant. This is going to be a reoccurring activity and situation that we're going to face year after year at this point. We had a closed session last Tuesday, did I get that right? Which we will report out in a moment. It's an agendized item regarding the Napa County Fairgrounds, so you'll get that full report as one of the agenda items toward the end of the meeting. With that said, we will move on to oral communication on consent items or non-agendized items. This time is set aside to receive comments from the public regarding matters on the consent calendar or matters of municipal concern that are not on the agenda pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, also known as the Brown Act. However, the council cannot consider any issues or take action on any request during this comment period. Speakers are encouraged to limit their comments to a maximum of three minutes so that all speakers have an opportunity to address the city council. I do not have any speaker cards, but is there anyone in the public who is interested in addressing the council on a consent item or a non-agendized item? All right, with that, I will close oral communication and I'll entertain a motion to adopt the meeting agenda as presented unless a modification is requested.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Kraus, a second by Vice Mayor Dunsford. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Council requests and ideas for discussion. Councilmember Lopez-Ortega?
As you mentioned, Mayor Canning, I want to express my support for the victims of their recent fires and to their families. We have some locals in our community that they are going through, you know, through the trouble that the disaster caused. And also, as a close and strong community, we need to be aware that anything that can cause harm and suffering to our neighbors, we need to take care of each other in case of any emergency or natural disaster. And also, I want to thank you, to say thank you to our police department for the initiative of collecting cars and coats to bring to the victims. And I just want to say happy Thanksgiving to all of you from my family and myself.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Barnes?
I ask two things. I too join Mayor Canning and rest of the council in those feelings for the poor folks up north. It hit home a little harder for me. We were evacuated, of course, a year ago, and my sister, who lives in Thousand Oaks, Westlake Village, was evacuated. She was out of her house for four days. They escaped unscathed, no damage to the family or the property, but it just brings it home a little more. And secondly, I'd like to thank all of you that came out to the American Legion Veterans' Day program. I know it was very smoky out there and the attendance was down, but for those of you that showed up, thank you, we really appreciated it. And we sat outside in the smoke for 30 hours in front of Calmart and we collected $1,901 for the American Legion. Thank you for your generosity. It all stays here in the community, helping veterans or widows or widowers of veterans, kids, sponsors of our baseball Little League team, and do other things with our limited budget. So, thank you again to the community.
Thank you. Councilmember Kraus?
Yes, to kind of dovetail in with some of the comments about the wildfire situation. We have had a couple of meetings here in the community to kind of debrief about the wildland fires. And recently, we had Bill Dodd here to discuss some steps that have been taken in the state legislature. And then, we also had a meeting with PG&E to talk about the power shut off. And one of the things I think this council should do, or the next council, is to hold one of the mayor's forums specifically on issues to the city of Calistoga, amongst which I would include evacuation plans. One of the big problems in Paradise, as I have heard it, is that there were four exit routes. They all became very quickly congested and people died in their cars and on the side of the road. And there are ways to mitigate that, and that is to have places of refuge within the community. And one of those places of refuge certainly could be out in the middle of the golf course because the combustibility, the vegetation around there is very low, and you get a lot of people in there and you could protect them very easily. So, I think there's going to be some lessons on survival that come out of the Paradise situation, and I think we should take those lessons and see how we can apply them here in Calistoga as well as honing our evacuation plan because sooner or later, it's going to occur again around us, live in a very combustible environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Dunsford?
Nothing to add, but certainly share the sentiments that have been expressed regarding the fire victims.
Thank you. I want to thank the community for generosity. We had yet another very successful Calistoga Firefighters Association bingo. Unfortunately, I was unable to be here. I was on the East Coast, but I heard they did well.
I was a winner.
You were a winner?
Yep.
Nice. You probably won because I wasn't there. That was my card. I want to say thank you to Calistoga's American Legion. I attended the Veterans' Day program and, as they always do, a first-rate program. Thank you very much for honoring those that have served. And a happy Thanksgiving to all of you and your family and neighbors and friends. Enjoy yourselves and be thankful for what you know we should be on a daily basis. So, thank you very much for that. City Manager's Report. City Manager Feek?
Just two brief items. Mr. Mayor, first, just to make sure everyone's aware, next week, we have a very big special event coming up, as you all know, the Holiday Village Lighted Tractor Parade. So, Mayor Canning, this is probably, has less involvement with the parade this year as in years past, but we're really excited. There have been some significant changes just to how we plan for the event. I think it will be a better event, a safer event, but also a very enjoyable event for families, for Calistogans, and all the guests who come to town.
This will actually be the first tractor parade in eight years where I'm a spectator, not an organizer.
Excellent. Well, I'm sure people are going to be pulling you in each direction, though. The other item, which I've asked our Deputy Public Works Director Derek Rayner to come and just share with City Council related to our pavement condition assessment. Derek, if you would.
Derek, welcome back. Please introduce yourself.
Thanks, Dylan. My name's Derek Rayner. I'm Deputy Director in Public Works here for the city of Calistoga. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm here tonight to just give you a quick update on our pavement condition index, which has done every two years, basically. Our streets get inspected and they get rated from zero to 100, 100 being the highest rating. And our last inspection was in 2016, and we were at a 52, so we're kind of right in the middle there. And we were projected to go down to about a 49, which is going from the good condition to the poor condition overall for our streets in the city. We have good news to report. The evaluation or inspection that happened here in 2018 shows that we went up 15 points, so we're at a 64 now instead of a projected 49, and that's thanks to the budget that's been authorized the last couple of years by yourselves to authorize improvements to the roads. We've done two phases of road improvements on Lake Street. We've also done a lot of micro-surfacing. We've done about a million dollars' worth of micro-surfacing projects around the city. And we are currently working on Spring Street right now with a utility and road improvement project. Our up-and-coming projects are going to be Washington Street from Berry down to North Oak, and we will also be working on Cedar from Lincoln to Spring Street. So, where we kind of sit as far as comparison to other Bay Area cities, the average Bay Area rating on roads is about 67, so we're just slightly below that. The top-tier cities, for example Palo Alto, had a rating of about 83. Part of the report that comes out gives you a projection on, you know, based on the amount of money that you put towards roads in the future, what your projected PCI condition would be. And one of the projections is if we spend about a million and a half dollars, which the last two years, we've done about two and a half million, that our projection in five years would be up at like an 87. So, it'd be... We also have some other funding that's made available through SB1, about $100,000 a year, and then Measure T, about $300,000. So, if we just used that money alone, we're projected in five years to go up about five points from 64. So, anyways, good news, and thank you very much.
Derek, just briefly, could you speak a little bit about how you make the decisions on which roads and pavements to fix first?
Yes, that's a very good question. Yeah, so we basically got all of the low-hanging fruit with these road projects that have happened over the last couple of years. To go up 15 points is significant, and it's all been surface treatments mainly. So, we've done the micro-surfacing, the chip seals, the slurry seals, and those are, you know, you get a lot of bang for your buck on those types of projects. And the up-and-coming projects are going to be more intrusive, there are going to be more major rehabilitation of roads, actual removal of pavement and utilities if they are in an aging condition that's very poor. We're going to replace utilities at the same time. So, projecting in the future, you know, we got about seven and a half points, you know, over the last two years to get 15, but in the future, you're only, you know, we're only going to go up about four to five points if we do about a million and a half dollars a year. So, it's going to go up a little slower in the future, just for reference.
So, it's my understanding that we fixed the more easily fixable roads first?
We did.
Because you get more bang for the buck in the ones, of which we have several streets in town that are in very bad shape, but unfortunately, they're the old concrete ones, the old really expensive ones.
Yes.
We save what we can first and concentrate on those really tough ones later.
Correct.
Even though it seems counterintuitive.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, just a comment. You thanked us for setting aside significant amounts of budgeting for roadworks in the last couple of years, but the real thanks has to go to this community who voted and approved on the two referendums for the two resort projects because the reality of this situation is we would not have had these funds available to us if we did not approve those resort projects. And we know how important, because it's the biggest complaint we get on a regular basis, roads and sidewalks are to people. So, this is a clear demonstration of that, of the community's initiative to go forward with that, that's paying off. And this is even before any Measure T or SB1 gas tax funds were made available to us. So, we are seeing the results of this community taking that on. So, thank you all for that. Thank you. City Manager Feek?
If I could, just one other addition I'd add to the roads report, and thank you very much, Derek. Another project which wasn't mentioned was Grant Street, so we're working on improvements to Grant Street. I think it's important, and you have an item on your consent calendar here, you know, John Draper, who's been, you know, former Public Works Director, who's been very helpful with us in planning for future projects. One of the things we're doing is we're planning our roads projects, our utility projects in advance, so working on projects this year in anticipation of construction the following year. We always want to have projects ready to go. Another key element that Derek spoke of is, you know, we have underground utilities which need to be replaced, and we have significant underground utilities all throughout town. So, we also focus on what are the most heavily-used streets in town. That's why Derek made a reference to Cedar Street, to Washington Street, we also have Grant Street. So, several sections of road where utility work is needed, but also are more important in our community circulation. Focus there. So, you know, we probably won't see a Harley Street, a Fourth Street, for some time because we want to address the roads that are more heavily-used first, which also have the underground infrastructure too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Proclamations, Presentations, and Awards. And the first thing we have is a presentation to the City of Calistoga Department by the Grateful Hearts Project by Karen Ingles. Karen, welcome back. Please come up to the podium and introduce yourself and tell us about your program.
So, everything that we're going, we're watching our neighbors to the north and to the south go through certainly brings back what we went through last year. And this project was a way of saying thank you to people who did so much to defend us and protect us. And we can't do what you did, but we can make art to say thank you, and that was what this was all about. I also wanted to thank the Arts Center because it provided a space where we could bring people together, and there were 32 people who were involved in this in one way or another. And also to the Arts Council, which provided a grant which paid for much of what we did, not everything, but most of it. And so, we have paintings that we'd like to present. And shall we start with the one to the city? Do you want us to go around? How shall we do this?
Sure, you can come around Kathy's side.
All right. So, the one for the city of Calistoga.
Kathy, can you use the mic?
Here we are. This was created by Penny...
Thank you. This was created by Penny Worsham. And did you want to say anything about it?
Well, it was a collaborative effort with Karen and I, but the idea was of all the people represent, the faces represent the people that are grateful, meaning all of us, and of course, the heart because it is the Heart Project. We love that the firemen and the policemen are here to protect us. And there's words here of boldness and saving, purism, fearlessness. Up here are words of gratitude, of praises, appreciative, honor, and grateful. So, that's what it represents. And this did come from my heart, and I worked on it very hard to make it exactly the way I wanted it to. And I also added the state of California since these fires are affecting all of us, my family included, who are up in the Paradise area, but they're okay. Yeah, we don't know about their homes, but they're okay, so I'm glad. So, that's, I'd like to present this to the city.
Thank you very much.
So, this is from Julie Kaplan. Nope, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, this is from you.
Yes.
So, this one is for, this one is for Chris, our mayor. And I understand that you did a lot of advocacy to make sure that they did not forget Calistoga when you were working with all of the people from all over. And I know it's easy to forget us because we're little and we're up here, but thank you for everything.
Thank you.
So... So, this also is from an image of one of the trees from the Harts that you also helped me with. You're very welcome. Okay, all right. And this one is for you, Iraise. I understand that you did a lot of translation to make sure that everybody in our community knew what they needed to know. So, thank you. You're very welcome.
This one is from me, this is my creation, to Vice Mayor Dunsford, for all you did. So, this is a watercolor that I did of the Sharpsey Museum and a collage that I put together with.
Kathy told me how you fed everybody and that you cooked to make sure everybody had something to eat.
I helped orchestrate, other people cooked.
He got to feed the mayor every night, too. He's a pretty good cook.
Okay, so, Chief Mitch? This is for the police department. Thank you very much for making sure we were protected, that we got out okay, and that we didn't have to come home to find our homes looted or anything, anything like that. So, thank you very much. Oh, okay. Okay. Diane? Diane Kirkendall did the one for the fire department, so... Do you want to explain?
It was my honor to do something for the fire department. My husband is a retired firefighter from the city of Napa. And so, in our family, we know that firefighters are heroes every day, and that's my sentiment here. And I was so pleased to get to take a photo of your wonderful firefighter, Adam Ramirez, in that. So, thank you very much for everything that you do, heroes every day.
I probably should have given this to you first. Thank you so much. And there's one more for the Department of Public Works, because we understand that you made sure that there was water to help put out fires, and that's pretty important, to say the least. So, in this one, it says, "Thank you to our unsung heroes who make sure that everything works." You're welcome. Okay, that's it.
Thank you guys very, very much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much for all you guys did. And Julie's painting isn't one of these, but she worked very hard at everything.
My recipient is not.
She did one for Calmart.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
So, we'll, when we conclude the meeting, we'll leave these up here. If anyone wants to come take a closer look, they are beautiful. And thank you guys for your time and your effort and for sharing your talents and your art and give back. Thank you. Next, we have a presentation by Planning and Building Director Lynn Goldberg. Lynn, welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm just going to take a few minutes to update you and the community on some things that the Planning and Building Department have been working on this year. We do have multiple projects in review right now. We've been working on bringing this particular project, Lincoln Avenue Apartments, to the Planning Commission, hopefully in the near future. It would add 78 apartments to the community on the upper end of Lincoln Avenue. We've also been working on the Veranda Hotel, which would be a redevelopment of a portion of the Gliderport property with hotel apartments and replace the laundromat, among other improvements. We've also been working with the potential developers of the Yellow Rose Ranch, starting the environmental review process on that, and also working through the design with the other departments on the street standards and items like that. They've also been having multiple outreach meetings to the community. We've also recently received an application for the Grant Street subdivision that would add 13 lots between Maggie and Michael. We're just beginning to look at this application. We only received it a few weeks ago. Obviously, there'll be substantial environmental review on this particular project. So, other projects in the review are Roman Spa Expansion, which we've been working on for a number of years, modifications to the Calistoga Hills project, which is before the Planning Commission next week. These are modifications to potentially relocate some of the back-of-house facilities and activities to another portion of the site that has been added since they originally proposed the project. The Lincoln Avenue Brewery and the former location of the Puerto Vallarta Market on Lincoln Avenue. Right now, they're focusing on just getting the restaurant reopened and not too much on the brewery part of it. Aurora Park is requesting the expansion of their visitor accommodations by adding three cottages. And also Marriott Sellers is proposed at the Sixth Foothill, which is at the very end of Foothill, closest to St. Helena. That one is, has been stalled for a few months. We also work, of course, on advanced planning projects. We brought you the Way Finding Sign Program, and some of these signs have been installed, the six signs have been installed at the public parking lots and also directing visitors to the restrooms. The next phase are three much, much larger directional signs, which are intended to provide quick directions to visitors' community entering from Foothill and also from Silverado Trail. So, these will be placed along Lincoln Avenue and direct people to things that they're going to want to quickly find, which is parking restrooms, information at the information center, visitors' information center, community center, and the fairgrounds. We actually have received these lovely signs, and they're sitting out at the corp yard. And if you approve an item that's on the consent calendar tonight to switch some funding around, we can get them installed, hopefully in the near future. They've got a great view of the Palisades right now, but they'd be much better on Lincoln Something else we're working on is the design for the Silverado Trail gateway, which would provide parking, restrooms, picnic areas, information on the Oath Hill Mine Trail and the Napa Valley Vine Trail. This is a city-owned property at the corner of Silverado Trail and the northern end of Lincoln Avenue. We've got a final proposed design for that that we just... We've got a final proposed design for that, that we just gave comments to the landscape architect, who's a consultant on the project, and hope to be bringing it to you next year, early next year. We've also been working on some ordinances and policies, potential cannabis dispensary regulations, updating various general plan elements, trying to do those in-house, including the infrastructure element, which is out of date, addresses water, wastewater, storm drains, the geothermal element. We had, we're taking a different approach to geothermal resources in the last few years than we took 15 years ago, and also economic development, which the circumstances behind that element have vastly changed in the last 15 years as well, and it's time to update that element. Some of the other things we're working on is giving, applying for grants and helping to issue rehab loans. So, we've issued 40 to date, using Home and CDBG funding. We still have some money available, and we're working on loaning that out. We've had a couple repaid, and so that'll cycle right back through, and so we'll have a continuous flow of loans under those programs. In the building section of our department, we've been really happy to see the Calistoga Senior Apartments project open. Planning was very involved at the beginning, you know, helping to secure the property and doing the environmental and getting it through the Planning Commission and all the various permitting. Public Works was very involved in the outfall, new outfall to the Napa River, and addressing a lot of challenging storm drain issues on this site, but we're very happy to see it open, as we are with the Francis House, which was a long time in the making. We brought it to Planning Commission with a design review and use permit, variances, and our building official, Brad, was out there, spent a lot of time out there as this beautiful building was reconstructed. Also continuing to monitor the construction at the Silver Rose Project on the Silverado Trail, the top part. Top photo is a shot of the main entrance to where the check-in will be, the underground parking. These were taken at the end of October. Unfortunately, we couldn't get a more recent picture because of the smoke situation. And then, the photo in the lower corner is the entrance. You can see the homes in the foreground along Silverado Trail, and this would be the view coming into the city, going up Valley on Silverado Trail. So, as you can see, this is moving along, and hopefully will be ready for occupancy next year. And other things we've been working on in the building section, we're doing plan checks on an expansion to Solage, which is going to be adding 11 cottages and a meeting room, new single-family dwelling on Emerald Drive, two duplexes on Fairway, and seismic retrofit of 1345 Lincoln, which we hope to be issuing the building permit for that soon. We're very interested in getting that building retrofitted, since it's all masonry. And the building section's also working on getting certain building permits available online, so that people can apply for things like re-roofs and furnace replacements without having to set foot in our department and asking for inspections online. So, been working on that for quite some time. It's a little problematic getting the payment system to work and get coordinated, but that will help our workload and make it easier for other people, you know, our customers, to pull building permits. We're also working this year on the inspection of the Fairway Mobile Home Park. We have gotten all of the lots plotted in that park for the first time, so we actually know where the property lines are for each of those lots, which we've never had in the history of the park. So, we're working our way slowly, trying to get as much as we can into conformance with state law. That concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
So, Lynn, other than that, what have you guys been doing this year?
We have definitely seen an uptick in activity.
Pretty amazing work, considering the resources you have.
We've added, just recently, our new senior planner. I'd like to introduce to those of you who haven't met him, Zach Testinker.
Zach, welcome aboard.
Hi, Zach.
Thanks for coming.
He definitely hit the ground running and has not been bored in the last seven weeks, I don't think.
Both feet to the fire right away, huh?
Yeah.
So, thank you very much. Couple comments, just as clarification. When we talk about projects that have been applied for, projects that have been proposed, projects that have been, are under review, for clarification, that does not mean that these projects have been approved. They have not gone through the hearing process. Because you read about it in the paper, doesn't mean that it actually exists.
Yes, those first few examples were ones that we're working on.
The Veranda, Lincoln Avenue Apartments, the Yellow Rose Ranch.
Right.
Grant Street, et cetera. So, there's still the opportunity for public input and comment on that. So, keep yourselves informed when those come forward. And when there is work being done, because this is something, a question that was raised to me, when there is work being done by staff on these projects prior to the going to hearing, the project applicants actually pay for the work that the city staff does. So, they have to pay for all of our resources, all of our work, and they still may not be approved, but it is not an impact to the city's budget, because they are required to pay for those hours and those resources.
Absolutely.
And in terms of your downtown signage program, it looks fantastic. It's a complement to the mapping program that went in two years ago now. Thank you very much for that. And the only thing, the only feedback I've gotten on the signs, other than they look great, is when can we have signs that tell people not to ride their bikes on the sidewalk? And I know you and I have spoken about that, so we're looking for some solutions. Any other council members?
Yeah, Lynn, very good report, thank you, and you have been working incredibly hard. There's one that I noticed that is not on here, the apartment condo complex across from the Monhof. I thought that was somewhere within the process.
That has been approved, and we're told by the developer that they're going to submit for building permits in January. That's the latest word.
Okay, I thought it had been approved. I just didn't see any action.
Yeah, it was approved a year ago, actually. We had to do a time extension on it. We were hoping they were going to come in in May. I'm not exactly sure, but I did just recently check with them, and the latest we've heard is that they will be submitting in January. We hope that goes quickly. They've built similar projects elsewhere, so hopefully, plan check won't be too grueling.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank your whole team. I know it's quite a few of you over there working on that. All right, I'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar as presented, unless anyone would like an item pulled.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Kraus. I have a second by Councilmember Barnes. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on, we have two public hearing items today. Item number 10, consideration of amending Calistoga Municipal Code 17.48.040(c)(3) to increase the number of marijuana plant, cannabis plants, I should say, that may be cultivated outdoors for personal use on certain residentially zoned properties. Zoning Code Amendment ZOA 2018-2. The recommended action this evening is to introduce the ordinance and waive its first reading. Taking us through this item this evening will be Director Goldberg. Lynn, thank you, and I'm sure you'll share some history on this with us.
Yeah, just briefly, as you know, the state law allows up to six cannabis plants to be cultivated per dwelling unit, and the city of Calistoga has chosen to allow for single-family residences in certain zoning districts that two of those plants may be cultivated outdoors. When we were having community forums on this topic, there was a commitment by the city that after we tried out the two outdoor plant limitation, after the 2017 Hall Harvest had passed, we would revisit the topic, and we reported back to the council in May. You received an update from the Calistoga Police Department that they had not logged any complaints related to personal cannabis cultivation, either indoors or outdoors, since you adopted the regulations about a year ago, going on a year and a half. Following discussion in May, the council directed staff to initiate potential revisions to the cultivation regulations to potentially increase the number of plants that may be grown outdoors for personal use. We referred this to the Planning Commission, and they held a public hearing in September. I just want to note that no public comments were offered at that hearing. The commissioners did land on recommending that if you were to increase the number of outdoor plants, that they would recommend four, with the, based on the philosophy of just gradually increasing it to, again, see what the experience of the community is and if there were any negative ramifications. They did offer comments that one commissioner had been approached by several residents, encouraging her to support more plants, but several other commissioners noted that there didn't seem to be strong community support for doing so, and as I mentioned, nobody offered public comments during the public hearing portion. So, there are various actions available to the council. One would be maintaining the status quo of two plants outdoors, and if you just maintain the status quo, this would provide a longer time period to evaluate the impacts of outdoor cultivation as more residents begin planting and are possibly more successful as they get more experience. Another option would be increasing the number of outdoor plants to four, which is what the Planning Commission recommended. Again, basically what they were saying is if you choose two, increase it, they recommended four, but they weren't landing strongly on please increase it to four. And then, of course, another option is going all the way to the six that are allowed by state law, and allowing six plants to be planted per household. This could, of course, lead to undesirable offsite and/or security impacts, but that is also an option to the council. And the ordinance that's before you, again, would increase the number of plants to four.
Great, thank you very much. Council members, any questions?
I remember when this came before the council over a year ago, and we accepted the Planning Commission's recommendation of two plants. We had quite a contingency that wanted us to go to a greater number of plants. I suggested at the time that we see how it goes with two plants, and I have not heard a complaint about having two plants at this point. The last time I heard from the police department, there had been no complaints to the police department, and Mitch has left. So, I guess I'll forward some hearsay. There had been no complaints that had reached the police department with regard to theft or order complaints or like that. So, I think, consistent with the action that the city council took over a year ago, that this is appropriate, coming back to the council.
All right. Anyone in the public wishing to address this matter? All right, not seeing any movement toward the lectern. I will close the public comment, bring it back for the council for any further discussion. We had said that we would go a year, and it's been a year and a half, on two. There have been no registered complaints. I believe the city of Napa is up to six outdoor, and we committed to the community that if there were no issues or concerns, then we would go ahead and entertain a larger number. So, I'm comfortable with the Planning Commission's recommendation, and they did have a public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, too, have had people, citizens, come to me and say, "Why don't you just kick it up to six?" It's out there, people are doing it. Two is fine. Why go through all the bother and hassle? I tend to agree with them. I would certainly suggest we go to six, get this issue done with, but if the council decides on four, I can certainly support that.
All right, any other council members?
I think one of the reasons that we had no complaints, we had no problems, is because we've been so cautious about it. We are not going up to six, because I wouldn't recommend that, because then we have to think about the neighbors, our neighbors, the ones they don't like the outdoors, and they don't like the activity, the extra activity surrounding, you know, the properties where they had more plans. So, I will suggest that we stay with four and see how it goes, and then my question will be, if we started receiving complaints and stuff, we might have to go back to two.
All right. Anyone else? Vice Mayor Dunsford?
I would just rather leave it like it is. Clearly, I'm outvoted or outnumbered on this one, but if it's not broke, broken, don't fix it. I'm happy to hear there haven't been complaints, but I know that two plants yields a tremendous amount of marijuana, and it's not even possible for one person or two people to smoke all that. So, I just would leave it the same.
All right.
That's the other reason that I would rather stay with either two or four, because, you know, with more plants is more production, and people might start doing illegal commercials, you know, there's much selling, selling.
If you can't smoke what you're, all of what you're producing, what else are you going to do with it? And I have the exact same concern. Six plants is a farm. It is.
You can gift it, you sharing it with your neighbors.
Well...
All right.
And I do have concerns about the neighbors. I have concerns about kids having access and jumping fences and stuff like that, so I've expressed my concerns from the beginning, but...
Okay. And these were concerns we had when we first initiated this, and we said we'd allow the year to happen, and we had no registered complaints from that standpoint. All right, unless there's further discussion, I'll entertain a motion as presented, and taking the planning, the motions for the Planning Commission's recommendation of going from two to four.
So moved.
I have to...
Second.
Wait, it's an ordinance.
Oh, sorry, 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 sorry. It's an ordinance, and we're going to waive the first reading. So, if you're making the motion, guess what you get to do? Thanks, Kathy.
Thanks, Kathy. I make the motion to amend Calistoga City Council Code 17.48.040, open parent C, closed parent C, open parents three, closed parents three, to increase the number of marijuana plants cultivated outdoors for personal use on certain residentially zoned properties, open parents ZOA 2018-2, closed parents two, four plants.
Thank you. Whoever would like to second that, you do not have to reread it.
Second.
We have a motion and a reading by Councilmember Barnes. We have a second by Councilmember Kraus. All those in favor? Oops, our roll call.
Roll call, please.
It's been a while, Kathy, since we've done an ordinance. Thanks for being on the ball. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Barnes?
Aye.
Councilmember Kraus?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez Ortega?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dunsford?
No.
Mayor Canning?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number 11, also a public hearing. Consideration of amendments to Calistoga Municipal Code Title 17, zoning to add definitions, provide consistent wording and formatting, and clarify the applicability of lot area and dimension requirements. Recommended action is to introduce the ordinance and waive its first reading. Taking us through this item will also be Director Goldberg.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. During the Planning Commission's consideration of the design review application for the apartment project at 1514 Washington Street, members of the public asserted that the project could not be approved because the lot did not meet the minimum lot area and lot dimension requirements for the R3 zoning district. And as cited in the written staff report, there are standards that say, following standard shall apply to development, there's a minimum lot area, and there is also a minimum lot width that that particular project site did not meet. Although there is no language in the municipal code, that expressly states minimum lot area and dimensions apply only to subdivisions of land or lot adjustments. This is how it has been interpreted by staff and validated by the Planning Commission and the city council. We do not apply these lot area and dimension requirements when property owners and applicants are seeking planning entitlements or building permits for existing lots that were lawfully created. To interpret the code otherwise would preclude owners of a substantial number of lots in the city from any further development on their properties. By way of example, I include in the staff report...
By way of example, I include in the staff report a little table of properties on the east side of 4th Street which were contiguous to the apartment project site, which shows that none of the lots meet the minimum lot width requirement of 90 feet, and most of them don't meet the minimum lot area as well. And if we were to strictly interpret the code requirements, that would mean that no further development could occur on any of those lots, even in the form of an accessory structure, a swimming pool, any improvements to the site. And that is clearly not the intention of the code. And we agreed that it could use clarification, and so we brought this to the council months ago, and you directed us to initiate code amendments to clear up any confusion and make sure we were applying it and interpreting the nonconforming provisions correctly. So what is before you is adding a specific section to Chapter 17.44 describing or explaining that nonconforming lots can be developed if, even if they're less than the minimum lot area or they don't meet all of the minimum lot dimensions, as long as that development is in accordance with all the other provisions of the zoning code, of course. So as long as the lot was legally created, it can still be further developed if it meets the other provisions of the zoning code. And we are also recommending that in order to clarify that these minimum lot area width and depth requirements are not true development standards, but they are, do apply to subdivisions and lot line adjustments. We're recommending a restructuring of eight of the zoning districts to separate those into their freestanding section in each of the zoning districts, separate from development standards. And then other things that we're recommending in terms of clearing up, you know, I can't resist once we get into the zoning code chapters, as long as we're in there, we may as well fix them a little bit. Just to emphasize that no development standards would be altered, but we are proposing some reformatting and rewording so that every zoning district is structured in the same way. And that helps us to find provisions in there quickly, and it also helps others outside of the department to look for information. We're also recommending the addition of two standard definitions that for some reason are currently not included in the zoning code, that we use these terms every day, interior side yard and street side yard. And then, again, most importantly, adding a section called nonconforming lots to the nonconforming chapter and retitling that chapter. The planning commission considered these amendments at a public hearing in September 26, and several members of the public expressed concern that the language we were proposing at the time would exempt development of nonconforming laws from having to comply with the code's development standards, and we agreed. And so we, staff worked with the city attorney to further clarify the wording and have, we've revised that section to reflect the city attorney's guidance. And so we are recommending that the city council adopt the draft ordinance, and I've also included an attachment that shows exactly how the restructuring is proposed, and that the development standards are remaining unchanged to each of the affected zoning districts. Happy to answer any questions. It's a little, little deep, but it's important.
Thank you very much. Council members, any questions of staff on this?
Yes, I wanted to ask Lynn one question specifically as it relates to the fourplex that started all of this. Are any of the changes that are in this proposal, make the outcome of what occurred over there any different? In other words, would the code change to the point where that building couldn't be built, or would it be allowed to be built as it was proposed?
There are no changes proposed to the development standards, so that project would, it's simply to clarify that despite the fact that it's a nonconforming lot in terms of lot area and one of the lot dimensions, that it's still a buildable lot and it's developable. So it could still move forward because there are no changes to the development standards, and it was not requesting any variances from the development standards per se.
Okay. So there's nothing in this that would preclude concerned citizens of some future project on a nonconforming lot from approaching the city council, asking for modifications?
Asking for modifications to the project design?
To the project.
No. They always have the ability to appeal a planning commission decision. But it was simply clarifying that even though it's a nonconforming lot, it is developable.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the council on this matter? Please share with us, should you so choose, you are not required, your name and your address, and please limit your comments to a maximum of three minutes.
Donahigan's 1410 4th Street. So this came up, as pointed out, because of the high-density multifamily dwelling complex at 1514 Washington, that they were now going to change to a 4th Street address, side light. Okay. So I'm one of these people that owns one of these nonconforming lots. So after tonight, when the council says we like this coding, and I like it too, should I, the question I have, because I fall, if my house should burn tomorrow, I'm, was a single-family dwelling, I guess in the past it was an R1, it's now an R3. So what I have to, Lynn can answer this because I just want it on the record, would I be required by the city to construct an R3 zone building complex?
Director Goldberg. Do you have, sorry, do you have any other points or questions to ask before?
I fall short of the new development standards when you make lots together. And so I want to know, can I replace a single-family home with another single-family home without a variance or special permits or any other type of requirements by the city?
Okay. Director Goldberg.
Yes, there is a provision in the nonconforming chapter that you can replace the single-family dwelling, and as long as it conforms to all of the development standards, setbacks, lot coverage, parking, as long as you do it in a timely manner, and there's a certain time period that's.
Is the timely manner written on the books anywhere?
I believe you have to pull a building permit within six months.
Okay. So if it falls down or an earthquake hits it down or something. And so I have the same rights because I'm R, I am single-family dwelling, but I'm now zoned R3. I have the same rights to add a bedroom or anything that any other single-family dweller has?
Yes, you do.
Thank you very much. And the last question, I know I keep going up. If this new code was designed that people want to, my neighbor and I want to sell both our lots tomorrow, and developer wants to come in their R3, does he have to comply with, this is designed for lot, new line setbacks? In other words, if these lots are still too short, and they still don't meet, even combined, they don't meet the new standards, is he prevented, a developer prevented from building on those sites? If the depth of the lot is, on page, you have a depth requirement, you have a depth requirement that you're putting in for new building and lot line adjustments, correct? On page?
Yes. So as long as they complied with the development standards or obtained a variance for reduction in setbacks or parking or whatever they did not meet, they could develop those lots?
They would have to ask for a variance.
Correct.
Well, if they could not meet all of the development standards, the physical development standards in terms of setbacks, lot coverage, parking.
And development standards, right, that are, we're going to approve tonight?
Yes.
About depth?
Those aren't changing, right? The depth of the, the minimum lot depths in the R3 is not changing.
Okay.
So they could, they could develop just like the 1514 Washington Street project was going to develop. They were not requesting any variances, and they were in compliance with all the development standards of the R3 district.
Okay. Because if you look at the chart that you have showed on 4th Street, the depth of our lots falls short.
Yes.
The 90 feet required. So if we were to combine those, they're still too short to build an R3 dwelling.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We're on the same page. Thank you.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Anyone, oh, hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Still public.
Sorry.
Anyone else in the public wishing to address this matter? All right. I will close the public comment and bring it back to the council for clarification, discussions or questions.
Lynn, two questions on the timeliness. You said it was six months you have to apply.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't have it in front of me. I mean.
Is there any wiggle room in there? Can you get an extension?
Absolutely. We would always work with somebody who was, who had lost their home.
Okay. And then the second question is, once the clock is running, can there be extensions on the actual?
Yes.
Thing itself, again, for reasons that?
Yes. For any building permit, extensions can be requested of the building official and granted under reasonable circumstances.
For normal, you know, life happens reasons.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Other council members with questions? All right. Lynn, thank you for your work on this. I'll entertain a motion on this item as presented, understanding that we are waiving the first reading.
I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 740 and waive the first reading. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Calistoga, amending Calistoga Municipal Code Title 17, zoning, to clarify the applicability of lot area and dimension requirements in various zoning districts, and to reformat certain chapters to improve their usability, parenthesis Z0A 2018-3, and parenthesis.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion by, and a waiving the first reading by Councilmember Kraus, a second by Councilmember Barnes. Any further discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kraus?
Aye.
Councilmember Barnes?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez Ortega?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dunst?
Aye.
Mayor Canning?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, Director Goldberg, and thanks for clarifying all and cleaning that up. Item number 12, under general government, consideration of a resolution requested by Richard and Deana Dwyer, the Dwyers, to enter into a Mills Act Historic Property Preservation Agreement for preservation of the historic Francis House located at 1403 Myrtle Street, APN 011-242-015. The recommended action this evening to the council is to adopt the resolution. Taking us through this item will be Zach Tusinger, right?
Tussinger.
Tussinger, damn. I just call him Zach, so.
That works. Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Zach, is this your first time in front of the council?
This is my first time in front of the council.
Welcome, Zach.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. So I'm here to talk to you tonight a little bit about the Francis House. We saw a picture of it up on the screen a little bit earlier during Lynn's presentation. The city council authorized the local implementation of a Mills Act program in 2010. Mills Act contracts are designed to incentivize the restoration and preservation of historic properties and offset the costs of that restoration and maintenance, and that's done by, in exchange, the property owner gets a reduction in their property taxes. Richard and Deana Dwyer have applied for a Mills Act contract for the Francis House at 1403 Myrtle. I think everybody's pretty familiar with the property. It was built in 1886. It's a Victorian-French Second Empire-style home, and it's the only remaining stone example of that style in Napa County. It served as the city's hospital from 1918 to 1965, after which it sat vacant for 50 years, fell into a pretty advanced state of disrepair, until the Dwyers purchased it in 2015 with the intent of restoring it. Restoration work on the project began in 2016 after planning commission review and approvals. The Dwyers worked very closely with an architectural historian to bring the home back into an approximation of its late 1800s appearance, and the work was done in accordance with the Secretary of Interior Standards for Historic Properties. And recently, the Dwyers actually received an award from the California Preservation Foundation for their work on this property. I don't think it's any secret that this was a costly undertaking for them of over $3 million, and at least $12,000 in monthly, or excuse me, annual expenses are expected in terms of maintenance costs for the historic building alone. Calistoga has only entered into one other Mills Act contract. That was for the Palmer House. I think a lot of people know it as the Elms. That was back in 2010. The fiscal impact on the city for that Mills Act contract has been around $800 per year. And for the Francis House, both Richard and I worked pretty closely with the assessor's office, and the calculation, early estimates are that the property taxes, if the council did approve the Mills Act contract for this, the property taxes would be reduced for them by about $10,000 in total a year. About $2,000 of that would be the city's share. In exchange, they would agree to maintain and preserve the historic property. Any changes they want to make, significant modifications, they'd have to come before the city for that approval. The minimum term of a Mills Act is established under the state law that authorizes it, and that's for 10 years. They are also required to automatically renew each year until one of the parties, either the city or the property owner, elects not to renew the contract. Over the baseline of 10 years, a rough estimate of lost property taxes to the city would be on the order of around $20,000. However, I would also note that the TOT generated by the property, as it's now bed and breakfast, would more than offset those losses every year. Richard is here to answer any questions, as am I, and staff does recommend approval of the resolution authorizing the Mills Act contract for this property. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Zach. I'll start on this one. I can't think of a better example for the creation of the Mills Act than the Francis House. So with that said, any other council members with any questions? We do have Mr. Dwyer here. I have said this before, I'll say it again, I'll say it every time I see you, sir, to you and Deana, thank you, thank you, thank you for what you've done for this community in bringing back that historic beauty to Calistoga. As some people may realize, that building was a few short months away from being razed as and knocked down, so thank you very much. Any other council members with questions or clarifications? Anyone in the public with any questions or concerns about the city losing $2,000 a year in property tax? All right. With that said, I'll entertain a motion as presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Dunst. We have a second by Councilmember Lopez Ortega. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Zach, well done. Every one of your presentations is going to go that way.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer.
Thank you, Richard. Please tell Deana thank you as well. Item number 13 is anyone here, okay, there we go. Item number 13, consideration of a resolution to purchase a replacement fire engine and equipment and authorization for the city manager to execute a purchase agreement with High Tech Emergency Vehicle Services, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $500,000, and approve a budget transfer from Fire, One Time Impact Fees 49-4700-4799, to the Equipment Replacement Fund 15-3299, and a budget adjustment for the expenditure to account number, doesn't anyone really know where these account numbers are? 15, but I must read them, 4970-4820. The recommended action this evening is to adopt the resolution as presented before proceeding. Are there any disclosures from the council?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraus?
I was in a conversation with Chief Campbell probably about a month and a half ago, and he indicated that the department was looking for a suitable replacement engine, and that they, the need was very urgent, and that they had been looking at demo model fire engines, but that they could not find one that was completely suitable. I had in the past worked for the company that manufactured the fire engine that is before us tonight. Company's name is Toine. I ended the, I should say, they ended the business relationship about a year and a half or two years ago because they changed distributors and went to High Tech. So I was familiar that this, with the fire engine, and I recommended to Chief Campbell that they have a look at it, and apparently they did, and they liked it. So I just want to make sure that everybody is aware that of what my involvement was there, I have no business relationship whatsoever with Toine. At this time, have not had one for at least a year and a half, maybe two years, and that I've never had one with High Tech, which is the distributor.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right. Taking us through this item this evening would be Chief Campbell. Chief Campbell, welcome back.
Thank you. I was going to give it to Lynn, since they've had every, almost every item on here today. Good evening. Since the fall of 2017, Fire Department staff was tasked with developing a vehicle replacement study for the seven pieces of equipment the Fire Department uses. In 2018, staff completed the study, which reviewed current vehicles and operational needs and provided recommendations to the city manager for further consideration. The study established the best practices for the replacement standards despite consideration The study established the best practices for the replacement standards despite considerations that the state and national replacement standards do not exist. So there's really no standard saying when you have to take a piece of equipment out of service. Within that study, it was recommended that Calistoga Fire Department's Reserve Engine, Engine Number 219, be replaced as soon as possible. The established replacement cost of this engine is $550,000 to $700,000. Engine 219 is 1995 Type 1 engine, and has been in service for about 24 years now. Staff began preparations for future replacement and appropriating future funds in the upcoming fiscal year 2019 and '20. However, this summer, our frontline engine, Engine 19, which is our newest one, went down for repairs and was in the shop for about six weeks. We had to move Engine 219 to frontline. It was used almost daily when we could keep it running. It experienced numerous mechanical issues, and is just not a reliable engine. These vehicles are very necessary for protecting public health and safety within Calistoga and the surrounding area. And staff has identified three demo engines that are available immediately. The first one is a 2006 Pierce Arrow. Asking price for that is $530,376 plus tax, plus inspection trips, and delivery from Florida. This engine does not meet the specifications that we would need. It does not have a pump and roll capability, and the wheelbase in this vehicle is way too long for our area. Second engine is a 2018 Sabre made by Pierce, demo Type 1 engine, and they're asking $465,872 plus tax, plus inspection trips, and plus delivery from Wisconsin. And it does not meet the specifications of the ability to pump and roll. The third engine, and the engine that we're going to be recommending tonight, is a 2018 Toyn Demo Type 1 engine, and the asking price is $447,706 plus tax, no inspection trip, and no delivery charge. This engine does meet our specifications of the ability to pump and roll. Staff is recommending the purchase of the 2018 Toyn Demo Type 1 in the following amount. The purchase price of $447,706, sales tax of $34,697.22, and I'm asking for additional $15,000 to buy some equipment that this engine doesn't have. Generally, purchases of supplies and service equipment are governed by the Calistoga Municipal Code in values that exceed $30,000. This purchase does meet that requirement. And additionally, the City Municipal Code allows cooperative contracts with other governmental agencies to establish, so that the city can take advantage of other governmental agency contracts or bidding processes. City Municipal Code Section 3.34.110 states as follows. Cooperative contracts with other governmental agencies may be established to allow the city to utilize other government contracts that have been or will be competitively bid. The city is a member of a National Joint Powers Alliance. Company's called Sourcewell, which is a nationwide public agency purchasing agent that solicits bids for various vendors for equipment. This JPA combines the buying power of numerous public agencies from all over the country to provide competitive, solicited operative contracts for the necessary equipment or products. Toyn is approved vendor with this JPA, and the fee is covered in the purchase price of the engine. The city's common practice of using this JPA is also present in the recent Public Works Department's purchase of a new dump truck. The engine at a very discounted price. The same will be the case in the new Type 1 engine purchase. Thus, the purchase of the replacement fire engine and equipment would be through a competitive contracting process conducted by the JPA, which identified Toyn as an approved manufacturer and High Tech Emergency Vehicle Services, Inc. as an approved vendor. The city, as part of its research relating to the possible replacement of Engine 219, sought quotes from other vendors. A negotiated quote from High Tech Emergency Vehicle Services is $447,706, which is significantly less expensive than the competitive vendors offering comparable Type 1 fire engines. In addition, the purchase price is significantly below the anticipated $550,000 to $700,000 for the replacement cost of the anticipated vehicle. The Toyn fire engine also offers a unique set of features, and that's that pump and roll feature that is an auxiliary motor on the engine that allows the vehicle to be moving and spraying water at the same time without using the main pump. The other two engines didn't, were not capable of that. The purchase of the fire engine and equipment would include a two-year guaranteed parts and service from High Tech and various warranties from the manufacturer of various parts of the engine for periods ranging from two years to 20 years. The recommended resolution authorizes the city manager to execute the purchase agreement with High Tech Emergency Vehicle Services in the amount not to exceed $500,000, which includes acceptable sales tax and authorizes staff to procure additional equipment. This engine was not budgeted for in the 2018 budget, 2018-19 budget, excuse me, and did not contain funds to purchase this engine. And it was not planned for until next fiscal year. Therefore, a budget adjustment for the purchase of this vehicle of $440,706, acceptable tax of $34,697.22, and miscellaneous equipment fittings, et cetera, $15,000 is needed. Staff recommends a budget transfer in the amount of $500,000 from the Fire Impact Fee Fund 49-4700-4799 to the Equipment Replacement Fund 15-3299, and a budget adjustment for expenditures to account number 15-4970-4820. Once the 2018 model arrives and we swap over all the equipment off the old engine and get it in service, we will immediately try to sell the old engine. This item does not require sequer review, and it's consistent with the council's goals and objectives. Council Goal 5, offer excellent professional services to all customers. Objective 1, continue to provide a high standard in delivery of emergency services. And there is a draft resolution attached, which will authorize the purchase of the engine, the budget adjustments, and to surplus Engine 219. I would be happy to entertain any questions you have at this time.
Thank you, Chief Campbell. Council members, any questions of the chief?
Maybe this is a question for Dylan. If I read this right, there is that amount of money in the Fire Impact Fee Fund, which we had earmarked to be transferred next budgeting year for this vehicle, amount of somewhere between $5,000 and $700,000. But we're going to transfer it a year early, and it will be $500,000 or a little bit less. Not like we're just taking it out of the general fund. It's in a fund right now. We're going to use it a year early.
Yes, exactly correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else, any questions? Anyone in the public have any questions? City Manager Fick, if we were to approve this tonight, would the purchase order be executed immediately?
Yes, we've actually been trying to delay the demo vehicle from being sold to someone else. We were very impressed with the price. We actually had them bring the vehicle to Calistoga so our firefighters could drive it around. The chief was unable to drive it, but the feedback from the Fire, from Calistoga's finest, was that it was a wonderful vehicle. It made its way with a full tank of water right up Petrified Forest Road, which is our test. But it did a fantastic job. They're very thrilled. It's a nice piece of equipment. We've, the city attorney and I have drafted all the agreements. We've worked with the parties. We've tried to get them to bring it out here for the last month or so, since we demoed it on site so that no one else grabbed it from underneath us. But we're ready to go pending council approval.
And we didn't scratch it while it was on loan to us, did we?
No, and I would like to add that we did negotiate that price down from what they were first asking for it. So there's quite a savings there.
Thank you.
Would there be any additional training costs for your staff?
No, we're pretty familiar with that type of thing.
Great, thank you.
All right, not seeing any other comments. I'll entertain a motion as presented to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kraus. We have a second by Vice Mayor Dunstford. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Chief, go buy a fire truck.
And drive it.
By the way, for $447,000, does it come with Bluetooth and air conditioning and all that, or no?
Great, great air conditioning.
Can we use that to deliver cupcakes and stuff with the raffles?
All right, moving on. Item number 14, which some of you are probably in the room for. Consideration of a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase a portion of the Napa County Fairgrounds in the amount of $225,000 per acre, and authorizing the city manager to prepare a final purchase and sales agreement. The recommended action this evening is to adopt the resolution. Are there any disclosures? I will disclose that I was a member of the negotiating subcommittee for this discussion with the county, which started as a JPA, and then we rolled into a purchase discussion. And I served alongside of Councilmember Barnes and City Manager Fick. So I just made your disclosure for you.
Yep, I'm disclosed.
With that said, City Manager Fick, can you please take us through this item?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'm going to try and be as brief as I can when trying to, you know, provide information about a process that started on October 4th, 2016. The city has been working now for 25 months plus with the county on the future of the fairgrounds. It's been a long process. There's been a lot that's happened in that last 25 months, as you know. So I'm not really going to spend a lot of time talking about how we get here because we've had council reports that provide you that information back in late May. But now the item before you is really one of the items that came out of the closed session we had last week. The city has provided guidance to myself, to the ad hoc committee, to negotiate terms of purchase and sale of the fairgrounds. This has been consistent with direction given by the city council before, and also the city's vision for that property, which is to maintain and enhance that property. I'll be very clear and candid with anyone that's listening. People come up to me and ask, well, what's going to happen to this? Or, when are you going to build a casino? When is such and such resort coming in there? There's been a significant amount of sharing and thoughts, to which I am quite surprised and shocked to learn. Because I, who have probably been the most involved with these negotiations, am not aware of any of that. So I will be very clear and candid about the last two years of time has been spent discussing, at first, a joint powers authority, and when the dynamics shifted and the environment shifted, the purchase and sale of the property, where the city would own the property. That does not involve enhancing the property. That does not involve knocking down buildings. That does not involve the much-needed retrofitting and renovations needed out there to make the property viable and fit the city's vision of what we want to do. It's been about how do we acquire the land? So the city of Calistoga and our residents own the land, an opportunity that we've never had in the last 80-plus years. Following closed session, the mayor and the council directed me to release the terms that the city and the county have both agreed to. I'll just make reference for everyone that in your, in the council packet, Attachment 4, you can see the terms, I believe there are 20, that the city and the county have tentatively agreed to. The first point I would make out is this agreement is non-binding until it is final. So at any point in time, either the city or the county can walk away from this purchase, from the terms of this agreement. I'm going to go now over some of the key terms, which I think are important, but I just make note. Anyone who's interested, please take a look at all terms. If you have comments, thoughts, feedback, let us know. The city and the county have worked at trying to find some common ground. And for a long time, the city and the county was far apart in terms of what we were willing to pay and what the county was willing to offer. Both sides do appraisals. Both sides have interests that they're looking out for. The city was able to comfortably feel that we could make an offer to purchase a portion of the fairgrounds at a price that we felt was appropriate and fair to the city of Calistoga. The county has agreed to these terms. As presented, the city would purchase approximately 34.3 acres of the 70.6 acre property in an amount equal to $225,000 per acre. The total for the 34.3 acres would be $7,717,500. The portion of property that the city would purchase, also shown in Attachment 1, is essentially everything excluding the golf course. The city would own the RV park. The city would own the racetrack, the Speedway. The city would own the Butler Building, the Tubbs Billion, the Arts Center, the Great Lawn. It would own the grandstands and the, I don't know if you call it the barn? The pavilion? The pavilion, excuse me. But also the small space where we're proposing, working on relocation of the Napa County Office of Education right next to Boys and Girls Club. So almost half. The county would retain the remaining portion of the property, which would be the golf course and the recycled water. A key element for making this transaction work, there are utilities, there is access, there are roads, there are things that cross both properties. And so the city and the county will need to work together on how those utilities are moving from one parcel to another when you now have new owners. The, if the council decides to move forward tonight, you're essentially authorizing the city manager to work with the county and draft a purchase and sale agreement. The county will draft the initial purchase and sale agreement within the next 14 days, after which the city and the city attorney's office will be able to review, comment, and opine on that purchase and sale agreement with the goal of reaching terms in 30 days. Of course, we can extend that 30 days if needed, but it will take time to finalize that document to purchase the property. That document will need to be approved by both the County Board of Supervisors and the Calistoga City Council. Once that is done, within 30 days following, within 30 days, then that purchase and sale agreement will set out several terms and items regarding the actual deal, if you will. The city, from that point, the point of approval of a purchase and sale agreement has 120 days to go through its due diligence period. This is the period where the city spends time putting together our financial plan, putting together our budgets and our pro forma, transitioning your account codes from who knows what they are now, I know what they are now, but from what they are now to city account codes, government account codes that match our city ledgers. We'll have HR policies, personnel rules, contracts that we'll need to review. The city is assuming the risk and the liability, so we'll have insurance that we'll need to prepare. Also, we have many buildings, many, you know, lawn space, trees. We're going to want to do arborist reports. We're going to want to look at conditions of, maybe not necessarily buildings. We know what they are, but we want to look at electrical panels. We want to look at roofs and see if there are leaky roofs. We want to look at several items as part of our due diligence before we seal the deal and take over ownership of 34.3 acres. During the due diligence period, the county will provide all the documents, materials to the city, including environmental reports, surveys, studies, permits, plans, all the documents that they have on file related to the property. In addition, the county would also confirm the actual physical boundaries of the two new parcels, one parcel being the golf course county-owned parcel, the other parcel being the city-owned 34.3 acres. A couple points now that I'd like to, actually, really, it's the last point that I'd like to make tonight before offering up to this council for questions. One of the items that has been a constant discussion point between the city and the county has been, from a philosophical perspective, the county as a landowner can sell that land for highest and best use. And as a landowner, you can ask whatever price you want. This property has never been marketed on an open market. They have been negotiating directly with the city. So despite what our appraisal says or what our thoughts are regarding the price of the property, the county has the ability to accept whatever offer they want. And they, the county has believed the city is getting a deal that is less than the market value they would get if they were to sell the property on the open market. Considering that, and that they do want to see the property be owned by the city, they've asked for a buyer's restriction, which would be a 20-year restriction on the property. The way, and this item, if you look at your language, excuse me, I just want to make sure and pull the bull point. to make sure and pull the whole point, it's item number 11. I'm going to read specifically, just so we know exactly what this restriction looks like. "The purchase and sale agreement will contain a 20, shall contain a 20-year restriction or covenant which would require the buyer, being the city, to share in the proceeds of any sale or lease of property where remuneration is received in excess of the current market value of the sale or lease, and in excess of what the buyer paid per acre on any portion of buyer's purchased property." This essentially does is for the county, if the city were to buy this at a price per acre below market value, and we turn around and flip it, uh, and we sell it for $500,000 per acre, or we lease it to someone, say, hey, we're going to lease it to you because we're not going to sell it. We'll give it to you for a buck a year, you pay us back $500,000 a year. There was concern from the county that we've nev, they've never marketed this on the open market. And for the city, we want a 20-year restriction. We've gone back and forth on what this restriction looks like. Uh, for purposes of this section, any sale or lease bile, buyer shall share in the cumulative value of these transactions based on market value at the time, um, and the buyer shall allocate to seller the greater of either 50% of the proceeds from such sale or 50% of the market value of such transaction, being a lease. The amount will be diminished by two and one-half percent each year over a period of 20 years, whereby the restriction would be null and void. So it starts at 50% of, of proceeds, which exceed the market value and exceed the price that we pay for the land if we lease it to such a party, or if we sell it to such a party. Um, and, and it would be on a scale that's a diminishing scale, starting at 50%, going down over the next 20 years, two and a half percent a year. You know, our contention as a city has been, we have, we have never had any interest in selling the property. Uh, that's a public benefit. It should be for the public use, uh, and we're not interested in selling it. Still, the county felt, uh, adamant that this language was included, um, under consideration of city council. I don't believe there are, I mean, all the items of the, uh, of the perk, of the, uh, the, the offer sheet are important, but I don't believe, uh, I need to spend more time talking about them right now. At the very beginning, I mentioned there, there is a non-binding agreement section in the, in this. The city can walk away at any point in time, as can the county. Um, at this time, with this project, the city is only authorizing the city manager to begin negotiating on the purchase and sale agreement. We've not encumbered any funds. We've, we're not spending time thinking about what, what repairs need to be made to buildings or how we're going to manage the property. Um, one of the key items which I'd like to just share is it's been clear that as a city, we're not going to take over any kind of ownership interests or responsibilities of the property until such a time as we close the deal. So, you know, we're, we're definitely moving forward, as we always have, to acquire the property, but we have our due diligence to work, to work out, and we'll want to make sure we spend our time on our, on our finance plan, on our budget, and, and, you know, understand, you know, everything about that property before we take on this, this responsibility. The, uh, this item is really setting the, the stage to meet some of your key council goals and objectives that you outline each year. First and foremost, maintain and enhance economic vitality of the community and the financial stability of the city. Uh, priority project number four was support long-term land stewardship of the Napa County Fairgrounds. Now, I, I certainly would suggest we consider a, a, a name change if the city is to purchase it. Maybe the, uh, the Dylan Feek, no, I'm just teasing, I'm just teasing. Um, but then also, uh, council goal four, expand and improve recreational community facilities. As, as we've discussed, there's a tremendous opportunity there at the fairgrounds, and, you know, you don't have to look far. The site where the Boys and Girls Club is located, Logue V Park, where the city has got, has become engaged on that section of town and really turned, um, properties into beautiful community assets. Um, I just, I just, I just want to share my appreciation for Jim and for Chris, uh, and all the hard work and thought that they've given. Uh, maybe a few other comments, kind of related, yet not necessarily so, about the work that the ad hoc committee has done. We have looked at every financial report and audit of the Fair Association. We've turned over every rock. We've asked questions. We've tried to understand the financing. We've looked at how the property would generate revenue from day one, whether it's the RV park, the event spaces. We've also considered the needs that we have, like providing water to the golf course, and what could the county do, uh, if we were working together? They take on half of the site, we take on the other half. Um, I think it's a, it's a wonderful partnership. I do think it will take more partners to make it happen. Um, I'm very interested and eager to keep moving forward, but I won't be bashful. The gray hairs on this side of my head are all from this deal. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions, uh, council might have. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Feek. Uh, and while Councilmember Barnes, myself, and the city manager were involved in the actual negotiations, because they were, it was a two-by-two situation, uh, meaning not registering the Brown Act, and you could get into real property negotiations, um, we'd had regular check-ins with the council. The council made it very clear during closed sessions, um, made it very clear what their intent and interest was and what our boundaries were. Um, this council has worked very hard to put us on very stable and sustainable financial ground, and the last thing we were going to do, uh, is become house poor on this fairground where we bought it with everything we had and had no more money left to fix it. Um, so that was, uh, one of our, our key, uh, responsibilities and drivers. Also, this council, uh, wanted to make this acquisition without unduly burdening our residents. Um, so we are not looking at, um, a property tax increase. We are not looking at a parcel tax. Uh, we are able to do this on future funds generated via TOT. Compliments again of this community's, uh, adoption on the two referendums of the two resort projects. Uh, there will be significant revenue coming into the community that has put us in a financial position to allow us, uh, to, uh, even enter into a discussion and transaction. A couple of clarifying points. Um, it was the city's, once this went from a JPA discussion with the county, uh, to a land acquisition, um, again, the city, the council's intent was land acquisition. We, our intent was to acquire as much of the parcel up to all of it, um, as possible. Uh, we sit here today still interested in acquiring the entire 70 acres. However, uh, there is a difference of opinion and perspective on what the other half of the parcel is worth. So at this point, we will acquire, uh, what we can and what is offered to us at a price that we deem, uh, and feel is fair and reasonable. Um, a couple of questions we cannot answer for you tonight, so you can come up to the podium and ask them, um, but what is the county going to do with their parcel? You'll have to ask the county. At this point, uh, what they've expressed to us is continue its use as is, which is a golf course, but obviously they need to do their due diligence, due diligence as well. Um, you can come up and ask us what we're going to do with the parcel that we acquire. The answer to that is, we don't have an answer for you today. The first priority, first and foremost, which we consider to be the utmost importance, is the ability to acquire as much acreage as possible for the first time, as Dylan referenced, in almost 80 years. To have a parcel of land in the heart of our community for the last 80 years that was out of our jurisdiction, out, I should say, out of our control, um, is a tough one for us. And we are now in a position where we will be able to, uh, thanks to the partnership with the county, uh, we will be able to acquire that, uh, should all go well. And then we decide, uh, publicly what we will do with the, uh, activities that occur on that parcel. Um, it is being acquired for public purpose, open space. Um, so despite what you have read on nextdoor.com, and maybe some of you have written on nextdoor.com, there is no master plan for us to put in high-rise, affordable housing, or build a Walmart, or build a Starbucks. I mean, we reserve the right to do all of that, but at this point, uh, there are no plans, uh, other than to first and foremost, acquire the asset, and that's the land. With that said, Councilmember Barnes, if anything you'd like to add, or did we kind of sum that up?
Uh, I think you got it pretty good, and I want to thank Dylan for his tremendous amount of work in two years. A couple of technical points. We will be putting down a $100,000 deposit, which is fully refundable during our due diligence if we find that we want to back out of the deal. And secondly, the house on the golf course stays with the golf course. We will not be owning that house. We'll own the house next to the RV park.
Council members, questions of staff before we open to questions? All right, is there anyone in the public who has any questions regarding this parcel? Please approach the podium, should you so choose. Share with us your name and your address, but you're not required to do so, and limit your comments to a maximum of three minutes.
Dennis McNay, Foothill Boulevard. Oh, Mayor Canning, congratulations on your tough-fought reelection battle.
Couldn't have done it without you, Dennis. Oh, wait, you're not even, you're, oh, can you vote in the city?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Dennis.
He didn't vote for you, though.
Uh, that's okay.
And Gary. Anyway, uh, I was wondering if you guys, the city, won the lottery? Eight million dollars for this property, half a million dollars for a fire truck to protect it? This is great. I like it, all this money. But I, I, I can't, you know, Chris, I always thought you were really Monty Hall in disguise. I know you could make a better deal than this. Cause I think, you know, the, uh, Napa County, they should give us that property, because it's going to take about eight million dollars to retrofit that mess and bring it up where it's safe to use again. Have you thought about that?
We have.
Okay, and you're, you're going to make that an income property where nobody has ever been able to do that?
Uh, they've been making income on that property.
On the golf course, right?
On the, on the parcel we're buying, there's been income made.
Okay, the racetrack. But yeah, I, you know, what you're taking on is a major liability. You know, you know, just the insurance. It's kind of like the swimming pool. Yeah, it was a great idea, but the, you know, the maintenance and the liability is, is costing the city. They're not making any money off that, and I'm afraid this might end up the same way. It's just going to be costing the city more money than the benefit you're going to get out of it. And like I say, for what the needed repairs, I, if I was Napa County, I'd be happy to get rid of it. So really, I need, think you need to think about what needs to go into that to make it viable. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Thank you. We've had, uh, 24 months of analyzing to get through this. In fairness to, uh, our partners at the county, of which we are part of, it is their responsibility as a government agency representing all of us, we are Napa County residents, to extract maximum value for their asset. It is our responsibility as a local government agency to expend as little of that, uh, of our cash for acquiring assets. Uh, we feel very comfortable, um, after a long process with consultants' input as well, that we are getting a fair price for what we are receiving. Uh, we are well aware, uh, and eyes wide open, that there are, um, complications with many of the facilities that we are acquiring. Uh, but when you balance all of that into what the current and future needs of our community are, uh, this council feels very strongly that this is the right action to take. And while the pool, uh, yes, costs us money, and yes is a liability, uh, there isn't anything we do for our public that doesn't cost us money and isn't a liability, uh, and the benefit that the community overall gets as a result of the pool, uh, I will champion that cause every day of the week, so, but thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Get to the mic first.
Could you tell me how these are zoned?
They're all zoned, public purpose, open space, including the golf course. Anyone else? So if I can lead to your next question, Donna, which would have been, well, if they keep the golf course, can't they do what they want on it? And the actual answer, or the, the answer is, uh, no. This current zoning is public purpose, open space, and the body responsible for changing zoning is this body up here. I just wa, yeah, I figured you were leading me there. Is there anyone else? Seriously? Wow. That was easy. Um, I do want to thank again, uh, our friends at the county. Um, again, we are all part of Napa County. They represent us, we represent them. They did what they had to do, we do what we have to do, um, and they are unnoticed that should they change their mind, we would be more than happy to acquire the rest of it at a fair, what we consider to be a fair price. Uh, with that said, I will bring it back to the council for any further questions, clarifications, commentary, before we move on.
Does this require a vote, or what do we?
It does, it's, we have to adopt the resolution.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I would request that you make the motion. You work the hard, the hard bit, and I would be honored to second your motion.
I would like to make a motion to adopt the resolution as presented.
Second that.
And before we vote, I, to just clarify Dylan's question, because this has come up since it's been in the papers, uh, the city has no interest or intent to take possession of or management of this property, any portion thereof, until we are the owner of the parcel. So please don't ask us what we're going to do about X, Y, and Z, um, project or event coming up. All right? With that said, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We will adjourn to the next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be December 4th, 2018. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone, and have a great evening. Meeting adjourned.